Yate, this is Edmund Yaasi, Council Delegate for Teru, Smith Lake, Marano Lake, Findale, Chirruck Truck in the Yamato. I'm Torey Glinishiro, Torey Chinigaschin, Setnajini Dushiche, Ashin Dushenelle. I just want to thank the President, Vice President, staff for allowing me to do the opening prayer. And I just, before I pray to all our listeners and to all our people on the great Navajo Nation, I just want to share a verse out of the Bible. And I'll read from Psalms 121, and it states this here. "I will lift up my eyes unto the hills, from which cometh my health; My health cometh from the Lord, which made heaven and earth. He will not suffer thy foot to be moved, and he that keepeth thee will not slumber. Behold, he that keepeth Israel shall neither slumber nor sleep; The Lord is thy keeper, the Lord is thy shade upon the right hand; The sun shall shine but not smite thee by day, nor moon by night. The Lord shall preserve from all evil, and he shall preserve thy soul. The Lord shall preserve thy going out and thy coming in, from this time forth and even forevermore." So I wanted just to share that verse for our great Navajo Nation. I know we're in hard terms right now, but we will get out of this. And I know everyone has your own prayer in your own way. And I know we always encourage our people to pray every chance you get for this virus to go away and for our people. So I'm going to go ahead and pray right now, everyone. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today, this morning, Father. We just ask for your guidance and your strength, Father, upon the Navajo Nation, Father. Just ask that you just be with our President, our Vice President, Lord, and just be with the Speaker and the Council Delegates too, through the Navajo Nation, and also our staff who are out there, Father, and who are trying to help our people to fight this disease, Lord. I pray that you be with our Navajo Nation police officers, our EMTs and our doctors, Father. Keep them safe, Father, and keep them strong, Lord, so we can get this virus, people that are affected by the virus, so they can have the energy to help them too as well, Father. We ask, Lord, that you just be with the people who have come down and tested positive for this virus, Lord. Keep them strong. Some are probably listening, Lord, at their homes and worried, Father, but, Lord, touch them, Lord, and tell them it's going to be okay, Father. Be with the family members also, Father, that are affected by the virus taking our people too as well. Make the family members here strong, Lord, and give them comfort too as well, Father. We just ask, Lord, that you make this virus go away, Lord. And I know there's tons and millions of prayers that are coming up to you, Father. Some with tears, Lord, some, Father, with just the straight prayer, but, Father, some with broken hearts, Lord. Make us strong, Father, as we, as Navajos, and then we are strong, Father. And, Father, just be with us again, Lord, and just bless this town hall meeting that we may encourage our people, Father, and to give them light, Father. And there is light at the end of the tunnel, Father. And again, Father, we just ask for your guidance. Be with our livestock, Father, the ranchers that are out there, Father, the farmers that are planting right now, Lord, and just be with them, all the business owners, Father, that are affected by this and that are hurting, Lord, and just be with our people who are roaming the streets too as well, Father. Just speak to their hearts, Lord, that they need to go back home, Father, to spend time with their loved ones. Father, be with our young kids, Lord. I know they want to go back to school, and the seniors, Father, would just help them to be strong. Our college students as well, our military people too as well. I know our military people are worried about their loved ones back on the nation, Father. But we're going to be fine, Lord, and we're going to be strong, Lord, and you're going to shield us with the power of the Holy Spirit, Father. And we ask for your guidance, Lord, and we ask for your strength again, Father. In this, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. So I just want to say, before I give my time to our Vice President, is that to our people, this virus is real. It is still out there. And I just ask that our listeners to take this serious. When we have our curfews, we all need to stay home and just to be with our loved ones as well. Be nice to our Navajo police officers, but they're only out there to try to protect us too. And even when they give us advice, then let's respect them. And also our IHS staff, they're out there too on the front lines. And I know they're wearing their mask, they're wearing their gloves, and I ask our people that we do that too as well when we decide to go out. Only go to our border towns when we have to get supplies, our food, pay our fee for our families. And leave your kids at home, listeners and to our people. You know, don't take them along, let them stay home. And when we go do our shopping, just go there solo and get our food and get out and come back home. Well, you know, our home is always going to be a safe place, and that's always been taught to us by our elders. And even when I stay home, it's a comfort. It's like we are protected as well. And that's what we need to instill in our children, that a home is a great place to be. I thank all the people that are taking this curfew seriously. And I know there's a lot of you out there, because I get a lot of texts, and, you know, they're saying that they're staying home. And so I'm really am thankful and grateful for that. But for the cruisers that are still cruising beyond the curfew hours, please think of your family, because when you talk to individuals out there, you don't know where people have been. And the numbers, sadly to say, are still rising on the New Mexico and Arizona side, the nation side. And I heard one of the doctors said that we, as nation, hasn't hit our peak. But we got other Indian tribes that are praying for us in their way, and that's, I'm so thankful for that. And so I just ask that everybody during this time to love one another, take some time and to be respectful to, you know, the leaders and to the staff and to IHS and to the doctors and, you know, just take a step back and just to be really respectful during this time. So President and Vice President, and to all our listeners, that I ask everyone to be safe. Wash your hands. I know people are getting tired of us saying that, but it is true. And so, and watch after one another. So President and Vice President, that's what I'm going to have to say here. And again, to all our listeners, please take this serious. We are going to get out of it, you know. And so I know we've been watching a lot of TV reruns, but there's a good show on ESPN now, The Michael Jordan Story. So that I just watched the second phase, and I got one more to go. So, and a lot of gunsmoke, President and Vice President, listeners. And so I'm a true believer in Western music. So, but this time, listeners, be safe, and we'll continue to be in our prayers, and let's love one another and pray for one another. And Vice President, I'll go ahead and give you the time. Vice President Lizer, sir.
All right, thank you, Edmund Yaasi. Appreciate your words, appreciate your encouragement, and ultimately the prayer. So Yate, I wanted to pray with you as well, so it was very heart touching. Praise God. So, Yate, I've been a Vice President Myron Lizer here, commencing this land, 1200, 16,000. I don't commence to Dushiche, class to Dushenelle. You know, when you hear a good prayer, when you hear some good scripture being read, it just makes my heart leap. And so, you know, especially at a time as now, Shidane, Shidane, there's a momentum growing that our economy is opening. You know what, with Georgia, South Carolina, and Kentucky are all thinking about opening up their state's economy and even starting this weekend. Don't get fooled, don't get tempted to try to open up ours as well. President I, Delegate Yaasi, and all of our Navajo Nation leadership are urging our people to stay home, stay safe, save lives. It's very important. Delegate Yaasi was right. Right now, when all the others are thinking about opening up their economies, McKinley County is exploding right now. I've seen the numbers. Apache County's numbers have grown. We can't pinpoint exactly what community because of the HIPAA laws, but these two counties are exploding right now, and the numbers are growing. And so when the rest of the country, which was exploding, right? When we didn't have a single case, when we didn't have anything going on in our area, the others, the rest of the country, these parts that I mentioned, were exploding in their numbers and ramping up. So you can imagine that bell curve. We're still climbing up on ours, haven't reached our peak yet. Our health professionals have told us that our peak is in the end of May or mid, I'm sorry, mid-May to early May. And President and I and leadership, we've been touting just stay home, stay safe. We wanted to flatten our curve, reach our peak sooner. And that way, less people get this virus and less people, you know, would face a possible death from it. And so our words haven't changed. In fact, we've ramped it up because we know a lot of our people, they haven't been adhering to these emergency crisis mandates, these emergency declarations that we've put out. And so they've had to ramp up as our people didn't respond timely enough. But I do know, as Delegate Yaasi has said, many of you have, as President said, a super majority of you have. We still have a few outliers, we have a few naysayers, we have a few people that are maybe indifferent. And, you know, it almost feels like we're infringing on their rights when we're not. We're actually trying to protect those that are out there, the vulnerable population, our grandmas and our chays, and we're trying to protect them from a possible exposure. And so to us, that is the greatest act of love, is preserving them, putting out laws that would curtail traffic out and about, the life as usual, right? When all of the communities and border towns and whatnot were shutting down, closing stores, limiting hours, and there was roadblocks and road restrictions, that was love speaking, love in its finest, trying to get people to not be exposed. And so a grateful heart and a heart that listens to leadership would be protected and would respond to that. And so I know that those few that are out there that are indifferent about it, you know, again, we're trying to limit our elder and our most vulnerable population to being exposed to this. And so as we are coming near our peak, we need to stay home even more so now. And so I'm sure this weekend there'll be another curfew. And as states are looking at ramping up their economies and starting everything, we need to clamp down as hard. So when you hear these states talking about opening, I want you to know you need to clamp down even harder. And I know there'll be some pushback, but you know what? We don't want any more people succumbing. Our numbers are way too high. We have too many deaths here on the Navajo Nation, and our heart is crying out. Our prayers are going out to our Heavenly Father, and we're asking that many be saved from this. And we have to work and act like it depends on us, but we have to pray like it depends on our Creator. And so that's what we do. And I'm not going to take too much time. I have, you know, so many things. I did mention that Kentucky, Georgia, and South Carolina are opening up their economies. I'm sure many more will follow suit, even our own state, Arizona, has been talking about opening theirs. And so please, 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 our prayers are that none more, not many more people would receive and contract this virus. And so a little bit on what Delegate Yaasi had said, I just wanted to read this to you. Prayer is one of the most important activities in our lives because we're actually talking to the sovereign God of the universe, who has all power and knowledge. He understands how we feel, you know, He knows our fears, He knows what we think. He has the power to intervene in every area of life, certainly in these times of COVID-19 crisis. Yet despite the Lord's willingness to listen and answer our requests, we are not always faithful in prayer. I count that as myself. I'm one of those, you know, I'm one of those. I'm not perfect, just fearful of our Lord. I'm God fearing. And so when He pulls something, puts something like this on us, and He allows it to happen, everybody asks why. Those that are fearful in the Lord should say, yes, Lord, be still and know that He is God. And so as we respond like that, as a nation, we'll see miracles. We'll see this pandemic subsiding and go away. So when times are good, we may forget to pray, or if maybe we doubt that God will answer. But the biggest hindrance to prayer is sin. If we're unwilling to acknowledge our sins and ask for the Lord's forgiveness, we'll have no desire to talk to a holy God. And I just labeled out that, you know, our Creator knows everything about us. Our Creator knows, He put us here, we're First Nations people. We've been on North America here from the get-go. And, you know, our First Nations prayers are powerful. I pray that we would arise and shine, as the Word says. And so many, I know many are hurting across our land, and it's our prayers that you'd be comforted. And it's our prayers that God would show His mercy and deliver us from this pandemic. And so with that, I'm going to just leave you with that encouraging word to pray, seek His face, and then to know that He is God. And so, Mr. President, I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate the prayers of Delegate Yaasi here just a little bit ago. And I just want you all to know, Shidane, that you, we love you, we're praying for you, and we'll continue to do that, you know, once this is all over, we'll continue. Because we should be changed by this. Yes, yes, let's be changed by this. We've been sitting in our homes for days and days on end, some of us more than. I've seen many comments, people were saying that I've been locked up for 28 days. I've been, you know, in my home for a month and a half. And so those are the people that I've seen, you know, what this can do. And so we appreciate you, and we ask for many more to join that contingent, to stay home, stay safe, save lives. And now I'd like to introduce the President of the great Navajo Nation, Jonathan Ness.
Thank you, Vice President Lizer, and appreciate the work that you have been doing right alongside me and the team, getting the message out, letting Congress know that we need to get the resources that were promised to us. Now, it's not a handout, Vice President, though, we know that it's not a handout. It's our share of resources. You know, as a sovereign nation, the 50 other sovereign states throughout the country receive dollars based on population on federal income tax, taxes that are paid by us. We all pay taxes. If it's not here on Navajo with land tax, we pay millions in sales taxes off our lands. So don't you want some of this money back? It's not handouts. It's our share of resources. If not, someone else is going to get it. And so Vice President and the team, the Navajo Nation Economic Stimulus Team have been working to get those dollars here into the Navajo Nation. So thank you for your work, Vice President. So Tchago, eh, eh di, nihi Washington, nihi Woll, shikero shudna. Eh she, eh, kladhi ilbeda hazan. Akko, lkinan, lkinan nachiyan, da eh, ahlaadeya, nachayalchina, eh chairman waliye go. Eh, nihi kedes, eh, lkinan eh, ya, ah, tschilgo, da, zin, da, anesh, zin, ya, shikero shudna. Akko, ah, Washington, hadeteh, da, kade, oh, yo, yo, goh, nahalon, da, anesh. To beninagi, eh, di, behazani, gi, yo, ashteh, ashtel ya. Donazkaz, eh, benatche, kathago, nahtani, ah, yehl, eh, goh, eh, lkinan, eh, yo, yo, goh. Nahtado, behazani, na si, gal, nahalon, oh, chi, yoshi, behazani, hadadeteh, kude, nihi Washington hazan. Eh, doh, yo, dadanili, ilto, doh, khasdo, eh, benatche, eh, kon, nihi Washington, tschilto, ilwolto, leh. Daditno, akko, eh, ya, naltsos, nihi, baka il ya, ti, doh, khasbehazani. Ti, doh, eh, benatche, eh, akko, ye goh, nihi, Washington, ilwolto, leh, daditno, shikero shudna. So, di, kath, naltsos, nihi, kona, nal ya, giya. Akko, eh, ah, da, jo, ah, kui, jo, tomogo, de, ya, eh, doh, nihi, kona, li, tadi, naltsos, ti. Di khor, snzchagi, na hast, eh, zada, beda, doh, na, eh, gi, jo, naltsos, ka, ndayil. Doh, de kui, she, eh, zada, jit, eh, tabaka, eh, gi, jo, eh, naltsos. Na, nachalchin, aj, ndalnesh, gi, Navajo Epidemiology Department hazan. Akko, eh, nachandalnesh. So, da, eh, naltsos, nihi, da, yila. So, nihi, koli, agi, eh, ya, sos, temeli, ya, jo, doh, hastha, nezna, ting. Na hast, eh, ting, doh, ba, ah, hastha, enelt, eh, nihi, ke, nihi, de, na, tes, tabadi, liya. Di, de khor, snzchagi, na hast, eh, zada. Jo, eh, oh, tes, tabadi, liya. Akko, ah, ta, temeli, ya, jo, ah, ta, nezna, ting, doh, ba, ah, dis, ting. Do, thaa, enelt, eh, ya, de khor, snzchagi, beda, doh, na. 1,143 positive cases. Ah, doh, ato, beho, zin, eh, ahla, temeli, ya, jo, doh, ba, ah. Sos, tsid, nezna, ting, doh, ba, ah, na hast, eh, hastha, eh, ah, di, tes, tabadi, liya, akon, da, doh, ba. Ah, doh, beho, zin, ta, eh, she, ti, jeda, zor, nak, jeda, zor, beho, zin, ta, leh. Ah, doh, koge, belagana, keda, hatin, je, kon, la, nihi, ke, nihi, de, na. Ah, tchada, dakhab, ah, jo, ba, oh. Ah, doh, la, jido, aj, keda, hatin, ya, ndalnesh. Aj, eh, ya, ahla, nezna, ting, doh, ba, ah. Sebi, sebit, ting, doh, ba, ah, na hast, eh, enelt, eh, ya, de khor, snzchagi, beda, doh, na. So, ah, ah, tsko, nihi, ke, nihi, de, na. Di, benag, keda, hatin, gi, akko, eh, da, il ya, la, da, ne. Koge, shan, nihi, ke, nihi, de, na, keda, hatin, gi. Benag, keda, hatin, gi, benag, di, de, na, be, ke, ya, benag, keda, hatin, gi, belagana, ke, ya, chikeda, hatin, gi. Jo, eh, doh, nihi, nihi, ke, da, beda, doh, ne, nihi, eh, beninagi, eh, akko, da, il ya. So, ah, ah, tsko. Beda, doh, na, gi, eh, ahla, temeli, ya, jo, ka, nezna, ting, doh, ba, ah, na, ting, ta, la. Jo, eh, akko, eh, kon, de khor, snzchagi, beda, doh, na. Akko, eh, naltsos, eh, nihi, koli, ya. Ah, doh, nihi, zan, ah, da, jit, eh, nihi, nihi, ke, nihi, de, na, eh, dis, ting, doh, ba, ah, tha. Dis, ting, doh, ba, ah, tha, akko, enelt, eh, kon, nihi, ke, nihi, de, na, di, de khor, snzchagi, beda, doh, na, eh, benatche, da, jit, eh. Eh, she, doh, batso, di, zin, doh, leh, shikero, llini, ah, tsko. Kon, beda, di, beda, doh, na, gi, eh, doh, batso, da, batso, da, doh, zin, ah, shone, shikero, shudna. So, eh, eh, akko, eh, naltsos, nihi, jo, doh, kuda, liya, doh, kudo.
Carrying the virus. Seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-six have been tested. Uh, one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one are positive. Uh, four thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine are negative results. And still pending are one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six. So those are still at the lab. And they'll be uh coming in. We're we're still testing though. We got test kits, test analyzers that came into the Navajo Nation that are gonna be given to all the healthcare facilities throughout our nation. Um, one thing that's uh that we found out is that these are new analyzers. These are new um test machines that verify these test test kits. And so in order to break in one analyzer, a new analyzer, it takes many of these tests just to calibrate one. And this company is on backorder on tests as well, test kits. And so as if we get through all these uh test kits, um, we're gonna be out, we're gonna be waiting again. So I just wanted to let the Navajo people know, yeah, we we did get some test analyzers and test kits from the federal government, but there's only one brand that they're using. So uh, we'll see how long that'll last. And because these tests analyzers and test kits, you can um fi- get the results within half an hour, things like less than fifteen minutes. So we should have a more accurate count. But once these test test kits are gone, we're gonna be back to the old reporting system, which takes forty-eight hours. We are trying to get labs here on the nation closer in uh Chinley and uh Shiprock, uh Gallup, so that test results can come in a lot quicker than forty-eight hours. So we're working on making those results a lot quicker for the nation. I know that there are questions about um regions. We need to know where these positive cases are. Um, counties have been using zip codes. But as you know, zip codes are not accurate here on the Navajo Nation, right? Because you could have somebody that lives in a rural community that gets their mail in a bigger uh community. Uh, giving the example, well, of Shanto. You know, people in Shanto may get their mail in Tubus City or in Kianta. And that's gonna give off a a a different result. So what we're looking at right now is return to re- reporting from the areas, the hospital service areas. Like for Navajo area Indian IHS, we will be doing Shiprock Service Unit, Kianta Service Unit. Uh, for six thirty-eights, you got uh Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation, Winslow Indian Healthcare Corpor- uh, TIOSO Medical Center, you know, just like that. That way it gives it uh brings it a little bit closer because we know that our Navajo people go to these healthcare pers- uh facilities uh on a periodic basis. So it's difficult if you can understand what our epidemiology team has to go through and verifying all these numbers because not everybody goes to um or gets their information uh or their medical needs at a particular facility as well. You could have people that get a second opinion, right? And that's another reason why uh we're asking our citizens, you know, um if you get tested um and you get a result, um, that's the result and keep isolated. Some some of our relatives are going to one healthcare facility, they're getting their tests, and then they're going to another facility to get a second opinion if it doesn't um, you know, if it's not positive. And so we're taking test kits away from from a lot of individuals who may need it. And that's that's becoming an issue here on the Navajo Nation as well. Uh, we want to give you that information for those of you that are asking. I know there's a lot of people, but let me let me quote one thing that came out of yesterday's report. And these are the epidemiology team and from the Navajo Area IHS and the um Navajo Nation Department of Health. Based on the data and the information and what you all are doing at home, uh, it's it's working. Because the quote that I'm gonna use off the report says, there does appear to be a flattening of the Navajo Nation Epi curve. So thank you so much for everyone out there abiding by the stay-at-home order. Remember, we're still in the stay-at-home order all the time, twenty-four seven. Only one person should be getting essentials. You should be able to go to your um appointments if you need it. Getting essential items, that's it. Not going to McDonald's, not going to all these other places, uh not getting your 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 snack to the store. If you're gonna get food and supplies, do it one time and one sale and then go straight home. The shelter-in-place order is still going on. You can see down in Phoenix and other places throughout the country, people are pushing back in the shelter-in-place. It's quite interesting here on Navajo, people want to shut down the Navajo Nation for two weeks, three weeks, while there is unrest in various places throughout the country because of shelter-in-place orders. You can see the unrest that's happening in other countries, I mean, other states and other cities throughout the country. We don't want that to happen here on the Navajo Nation. Unrest. And I've already saw people saying, well, government can't tell me what to do. Government can't tell me to stay home. Those are the individuals that are not abiding by these public health orders that are um being issued by the Navajo uh Health Command Operations Center. And what do you do there? And we don't want unrest here on the Navajo Nation. But we're asking everyone to hold each other accountable. That's not that difficult, ladies and gentlemen. Holding each other accountable. And I've said this many times on on these uh forums, uh, saying that if you see somebody out there or if you know a relative, you know, say it respectfully. Say, hey, ah, London, sun, sun, da, ashwana, kebe. Government can't do everything. And some of you that are wanting government to shut down the nation, wow. You're you're asking for what? A a a state that's similar to other countries throughout the throughout the world? And we don't want that to happen here on Navajo. But that's just a select few, just a small percentage of our Navajo people. And I I again, I don't know how many of us were taught, but I think all of us were were raised to respect and honor authority and and police officers are in authority right now. Let me just give you a perspective of of what's our frontline warriors are dealing with. Navajo Nation, the report I got on on Monday was fifteen personnel at the uh Police Department have tested positive for COVID nineteen. Six officers, four sergeants, three dispatch, and two civilian personnel. And they're the ones on the front line telling us to stay home. Be safe, save lives. Let's abide by them. There does appear to be a flattening of the Navajo Nation Epi curve. That's what it states from the uh Navajo Department of Health. And I'm hoping that we can start flattening this curve. You know, there's a projection that that was made, and I've been saying this, Vice President just said this a little while ago too, is that the projection has us down as having our peak in uh early May or mid-May. We're in mid-May right now. If we're flattening the curve, let's continue to do what we're doing by staying home and wearing our masks. That's another public health order that came by came up on Friday. If we don't have masks, then cover your your mouth and your nose with uh a cloth. That can help. That can help us. Well, let's not let down. Just because I gave you this news, this this sentence, doesn't mean, oh, we're out. We're out of the uh the 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 epidemic or the I'm sorry, the pandemic that's here happening on the Navajo Nation. Let's not let down. Let's continue to obey and let's bring these numbers down so that we can open uh fully our Navajo Nation. And that we have to all be working together, ladies and gentlemen. The Navajo Nation Department of Health the eh naaltsosikadele the kui sheeje the konne la eh ya the koshin chagi beda dolna aru di dokon di che eh konan konelte da no ahut ah naaltsos uh yikadele adon dey chka kodoo da ne nhaal chen aje gego da yitcha gi beda azene gi di ka da ze eh ashon otago gego tey khaalne di hikene hinekon the koshin chagi beda dolnagi kar eh ashon do la beda dolna da do di kon adajutene gi gi kui sheeje uh aru ah la nhaal chaat jutene di uh di 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 isla da ze jensli so eh beni na eh kon adah da halya do jie adah tke aru ah di naan thine do beda no thine yaakodon nil ha ne ne ah nilscho kodoo nihe naan ne shu teh shikaydo shunna nihe naan ne shu teh do eh ah nihe washin don jen da ndeelne shi do naat ah ni dey bena bena ne shu da et eh da ah nilscho nihe naan ne shalno kodoo daa nils ah do kodoo ahah gane ndasi tcha ha ne ne eh uh nihe naan ne shu dey la eh go di yaakodon nilo da kon nihe eh nihe eh nihe nekon uh te da ha te ne gi da ne bi kei afaka um, couple of other things that we've been doing, uh that's a highlight. We're working with um various organizations, um our Attorney General and uh Doreen McPaul. And her team will be doing a report right after me on the donations. Many uh donations coming in. We have our own official donation site. Visit our social media pages. We have uh people that are helping us, movie stars even helping us. Uh, we have Mark Ruffalo, who played the Hulk. We have Paul Rudd, um, who played the Ant-Man. Uh, Taika Taika Waiti, who was the director of Thor, Ali Young from Protect the Sacred. Uh, we also have uh Jolie Fisher uh and many others. I I just heard on the news that there was another uh individual who is uh helping out. So just keep in mind that there is uh one official donation site here on the Navajo Nation, everyone. Um, there are many others out there. Um, we just, we just can't regulate everybody, keep an eye on everybody. Uh, me being your president, we just want make make sure that those dollars that are intended for our citizens get to you, get to the citizens. And I'm sure many organizations are doing that. But there is also others that are taking advantage of people throughout the country, and we don't want that to happen. And that's happened in the past before too, during uh emergency declarations. But there are a lot of people that are working through our Health Command Operations Center and donating supplies and food, and thank you for the work that you all are doing uh on behalf of our Navajo citizens. We're getting out those supplies to our first responders as quick as we can. We get it, get it out. Um, as you know, those um personal protection equipments like gloves and masks, they go through them very fast. This whole weekend, fifty-seven hour, they go through them really quick. And some are even reusing their masks um because there's a shortage throughout the country of masks and gloves. Gloves, we have our own um manufacturing facility that are giving us gloves here on Navajo and helping others throughout the country, but you know, we have such a small um, a small manufacturing facility um that we can't just uh help uh everyone's needs here. There's a shortage. Um, so that is why there's a nineteen million dollar uh appropriation that the council did with our help of getting this larger facility built right between the Church Rock Facility and the um uh Fire Rock Casino, that vacant land will have a larger latex glove uh facility. That's a story that that was uh aired in in some of the news and how the Navajo Nation is contributing to uh this pandemic, not just here on Navajo, but helping others throughout the country as well. Uh, we had a Navajo Nation Congressional Virtual Town Hall this weekend. We had Senators Udall, Senator McSally, Assistant Speaker Ben Ray Luhon, Rep. Representative Tom O'Halloran, Representative Deb Holland, uh also our Arizona Representative Myron Sosie, um, giving us updates on what's happening. There's a fourth and fifth stimulus package that they're talking about in Washington DC right now. And so we're making sure uh that we advocate for our small businesses here on the Navajo Nation to be included in any relief bill for small businesses throughout tribal communities. Uh, and I I spoke a little bit about testing. Uh, there's gonna be more test kits that are coming. So we pray that it it when we won't have a lot more positive cases, but with more testing, you know, people will expect the the numbers to increase. We're very aggressive on our testing, though, like I said. Getting more people tested. Um, there was a big turnout at uh Monmet Valley, um, a drive-up type of testing. And so hopefully, we don't see a big spike from there. You know, throughout the country, um, these spikes are because of the aggressive testings that we're we're doing. Uh, they're doing and we're doing here on the Navajo Nation as well. Lastly, I I just want to say that the plan that that has been put in place for the Navajo Nation continues. I I keep talking about this over and over because many of the comments come up and say, what's the plan? What's the plan? You know, the plan we've been talking about ever since we started these uh town hall meetings. We're developing alternative care sites. We got one built in Gallup, Mi'amera Gymnasium. A alternative care site, they call it ACS, where if the hospital, the healthcare facility gets overwhelmed with patients, then there's this alternative care site where they can help relieve some of the pressure, relieve some of the patients that are going into the emergency rooms. So we'll we'll get some pictures of that and we'll put it on our Facebook. I think you you might have seen it on some of the news segments there. We also have one that's gonna be starting construction this week in Shiprock and in Chinley. Uh, and those are gonna be close to the healthcare facilities. We're we're I know I told you that we're flattening the curve. Uh, we're going by the projections that say that mid-May, early May. So it's better to be safe than sorry, right? So that's why we're doing these altern- alternative care sites. And we also have started to put people into hotels. Um, those that have tested positive. We have police officers that have tested positive that are being uh isolated as well, away from their family. And so we are uh doing our very best in working with the hotels uh and gymnasium, or schools for the gymnasiums too. Uh, we're gonna be working in in Tuba, uh Winslow, Holbrook, um, here in Fort Defiance as well. I know not many people want to uh open up their gymnasiums, right? Or or their hotels. Um, but we we just need to uh start planning. And those are, those are the plans that are being put in place right now. Just in case, uh worst-case scenario that we see a peak. Don't let down though. Don't let down, please, ladies and gentlemen. Continue to stay home. Um, so the FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers, National Guard, Team Rubicon, they did assessments. We're we're doing those facilities uh right now in the Navajo Nation, or at least at the at the least fifty beds to be placed in these gymnasiums. Uh, donations and volunteers. We're also working with uh um our governors. We're gonna have a town hall virtual meeting, virtual town hall meeting on Saturday at six PM. We got another curfew, fifty-seven hour curfew coming up. So tune in on Saturday at six PM to our uh social media pages, and then we're gonna see if we can get in on KT and it talking. We have invitations to the uh the governors of Utah, uh Arizona and New Mexico. We're also wanting to begin our partnership with uh New York Governor Andrew Cuomo. We spoke to him uh the other day. You know that there's a big spike in New York, and they're flattening out too as well, it sounds. So they have a lot of supplies there, uh and a lot of uh resources there, and they know um firsthand um what to do. And so we're we're gonna be listening to what they've uh done there in New York. And we're working on trying to get some of the some needed supplies uh that they may have a little bit extra to come to the Navajo Nation. And and it's great to um know that uh our governor used to be the HUD Secretary, um, many administrations back. And uh during the Clinton administration, he's been on Navajo, he's been in tribal nations. So Andrew Cuomo, uh the governor of New York, knows the needs of Indian country, and we appreciate Mark Ruffalo and the team there for um putting us in touch with uh the governor of New York. So we'll be um talking with them uh more throughout this uh this week. We have been getting national media attention, yes, and we are uh letting our reporters know that uh we are a sovereign nation, and any type of filming that occurs here on nation um has to go through the HCOC. And so those of you that reporters that are on the air, um please go through our HCOC, our Health Command Operations Centers, especially if you are gonna be doing uh um live feeds here on the Navajo Nation. Please respect uh our government. And we we want to make sure that accurate information is is going out to uh people throughout the world. Uh, I'll end there. Uh, I know, again, there's just so much to report, and so we just give you a little brief segments of of what we've been doing up to date. We are, Vice President and I are on our fourteenth day of self-quarantine. As you noticed, both of us, no symptoms. Uh, so the fourteen days is up today, and we'll be back out tomorrow. Tomorrow, um our governor from Arizona, uh governor, um will be helping coordinate uh efforts to bring drinking water uh to the Navajo citizens that are in rural parts um of the reservation. So uh oh here shee da nihe ni do leh la shee konso nihe hada sishike shen na oh hiu bah da han ne nde kodoo nhaal chen ne gego da yitcha gi do bena ne shi ede yit ne gi shee kodoo nihe hada hada do zeh do bena ne shi dey ede yit ne gi shee no ya ya da ha na doz leh so kodoo eh ya uh uh ah ah shchan ne nihe je kui shlaan deh ndeelne shigi akoh nhaal chen da bej eh ya da tki ashon deh di jop ba hada ha ne ne gi ya di kon uh uh ah ben tsu da kesigi da ne ne gi ya computer biye la do zeh da eh go biha daa ne ne gi kei de ne ban tsu zeh kesu halayt ah di nhaal chen ne ne da khegi ne gi kei da ne ne gi bi ya da ho ah la winz sa eh ha shkei jen nihe che ya da tki oh nihe ya da ho ah sho da da ha no da ahut ah nihe kei nihe ne ne da khegi be che ya da stke ah do ah be dey ya adah da tne nhaal tsu da kes da bedo ne naastasod ne gi hik eh da ne ne gi do la do kon di cheh la da ban tsu zeh kesu naat ah ni jen ne ha shet ah eh kuat do njaunego lche geyl tke da da si eh denene tlini la akoda eh do kodan ne sa eh ashon nhaal tsoda diilzen daan ne ni ken si tsen oh kheyu nihe ken si tsen daan ne akond la sa eh kodoo biha eh ya da no naaltsosikadele nihe nde kodu tsese naaltsosu da eh gi ne biha da no ahut ah do jo ya da halna oh ya ya da tke doz sa naaltsosikadele ha shet ah ya da ho ah winz eh ahut ah eh ban tsu zeh kes eh la ba mah eh la bej eh eh la ba masan eh la bej che eh la do ne daan leh ah beha zeni eh la da ahut ah lchen doh adab di noh do eh ah ah ne dey ya ah na adah yan tke da bedi ne ni kei ba yan tke niha masan nihe chei ba yan tke da bedi noh eh ya hada alni do leh do ye da bedzi lo leh shikayshunna ban tsu da kesu kar eh ha gande nhaal chen ndahaaz tcha ahut ah bej geyl tke ah do ahut ah ye hada alni do leh njaunego eh ya naaso bedzi lo dey khat do leh di naalni gi bi 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 chen i khat ndeshne ndeshne oh jop ah kon ah 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 ye go la nihe kei de ne da yitza da eh do da yitza ni shee ho da eh ho la the koshin chagi be yitni oh da azenda do la do da ni da do leh lta eh go ha da ni do leh eh da ze beni na la daan ne ni washin ton la do nihe nihe ke da desi da haajla da skhaidan ne nihe ya nhaal tsola ah nilscho denene tlini do eh washin ton ba so la da ah nilscho da si nils ah ahut ah naan ne shu dey ne ndeipah ahut eh da di kon na the koshin chagi naast eh zata ke je ndeipah akonda ban tsu zeh kesu eh bi chen i khat do da handi ni neh loh eh di shikay no tlini ada adah halya lke da da eh nhaal chen no tleni gi niha masan nihe chei na leh da yitso no tsa ken soze di ro sah oba eh gi do 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 ya eh gi do ba so tke so here na di kodoo nihe President Jonathan Nezdi cheha na naat si do leh ah hadaino tne biha da di noh ahut ah ahut eh jut eh go ha ne ne ben da ha diil acha aje ho jishkei no tlini kodoo shee ha ga di tahi uh laa jen nhaadasu tagi Doreen McPaul do ajen dalne shigi shee eh kodoo nihe cheha si do leh eh kodu uh peso i beka naal du agido aran hikai chegi shee ya halna do leh so konso shee je hada si do leh hadaino tne ah do di yendo nihe ta halno do leh Thank you. Attorney General.
All right. Thank you, President. Yat Ebeneh, Shay Doreen Nanabam McPaul Yeneshia ki ani nshna bilagana bashischi honaati daschei bilagana dashe na lechinli dey nasha um, just to follow up on the President's um the information he shared and the announcement that was made last week regarding the Navajo Nation's COVID nineteen donation fund. Um, our office is tasked by our Health Command Center to staff a donation branch under our logistics section. And so I wanted to share some information about that. The, we've had a website with information that identifies both the medical and non-medical needs for our communities. And so that, that website has been active for a couple of weeks. But yesterday was the first day that we have an active electronic payment link. And we appreciate our PIO at the Health Command as well as our Controller's Office helping us get that set up. And the website information is the same. It's nndoh.org backslash donate.html. You can also just Google Navajo Department of Health Donate and the website should come up. There's only one official effort of the Navajo Nation and it is this one. And as I mentioned, the Navajo Nation is seeking both monetary and, and non-monetary donations. And we're also facilitating getting volunteer health professionals to assist in our medical facilities. We do have at our office, two dozen staff members that are answering calls and emails. And yesterday after the segment on the Today Show aired, our phones, every single phone in our office was, was ringing. And we couldn't keep up and answering those calls. But we're, it's been a, it's been a tremendous honor to talk to people who are calling literally from all over the world to express their concern for the nation, some of them in tears, and offering their support, both monetary and non-monetary support. We are facilitating those donations to come into the Navajo Nation. We have different delivery sites for medical donations, for community donations. And so we have that information up on the website and we're, but we're happy to talk to people on the phone or respond to emails too. So you can call us at our office. The direct line there is 928-871-6206. Or you can send us an email at general@nndoj.org. All of our folks who are answering the phones and responding to those emails are trained to give consistent information and facilitate those donations. But more importantly, we regularly work with our Command Center to update the priority medical needs as well as community needs. So right now I can tell you that one of the critical needs in terms of medical donations are medical gowns. Previously it had been masks, but right now our critical need is with respect to medical gowns. We did do a community drive for masks because of the updated CDC guidance on wearing a mask in public as well as our own Public Health Emergency Order regarding masks that went into effect on, on Friday. I do want to share some of the, the donations that we have here, just so that you have a sense of what people are donating, if you need ideas. In terms of non-medical donations, we have people donating wood and coal, food and cleaning supplies, water, flour. Nappy and NHA donated 270 bags of flour, 20-pound bags apiece. We have people donating baby supplies, huggies and, and things for, for babies. We had the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints donate 1,000 masks and more to come. And I'm just doing select donations here, soap, hand sanitizer. SRP donated 15,000 individual packets of hand sanitizer. And so we really appreciate those donations. In terms of medical supplies, it's previously reported, the University of Arizona donated testing kits. AB Staffing in Gilbert, Arizona donated 10,000 N95 masks to the nation. PNM San Juan Generating Station donated 895 masks. Michael Tang from National Material donated 10,000 medical-grade face masks, including surgical mask and N95 masks. So we've been getting a lot of mask donations which we, which we absolutely need. And we appreciate people who are responding to those efforts. In terms of monetary donations, we have a lot of people who want to contribute by sending checks or wiring payments or using our payment link to donate to the nation. We will provide an updated amount of the donations. We have to work with our Controller's Office to get those amounts. But I can tell you that after our payment link went active yesterday at 2:30 in the afternoon in our first few hours, there was over $10,000 in donations. And I think the link was so active that some people couldn't get through. So we appreciate people continuing to, to make those efforts. But I'll also share that we received, and I think Presidents reported these donations out already as well. But our DNA Development Corporation donated half a million dollars to the nation. NTech, quarter of a million dollars. APS, TEP, SRP, and the employees from Four Corners Power Plant, half, quarter million dollars. Navajo Nation Shopping Center, $25,000. S-Power, $15,000. First Nations Development Institute, $50,000. And there's more, there's, you know, doesn't have to be in these huge amounts. We have people who are calling to make donations as little as $5. Everything helps. All those donations help us buy critically-needed supplies in bulk and so we can get more for less. I want to give the, the microphone over to our Deputy Attorney General who wants to share some information about a mask donation effort.
Good morning, Yat E everyone. I wanted to highlight today a very special donation that we received from Tammy Burbank and her family. Tammy is from Chinli but lives in Tempe. And Tammy contacted President Nez and asked about donating fabric masks to the nation. And Tammy, along with her family, which includes her daughter Naomi, her father, Tom Burbank, who pastors a church in Blue Gap, Arizona. And they garnered additional donations from people across the nation, really. And Tammy came up with this ingenious idea of preparing mask kits that I'd like to share. So each one of these, in this nicely-bound container, contains enough material and supplies, including needles, fabric, elastic, and thread to make 50 fabric cloth face masks. And Tammy included instructions in here that are included in the mask. And also up on the front of the box, it includes how to wear the mask and how they can be used to keep people safe. Tammy put all of these supplies together, took the time and the energy and effort to do that along with her family. And she donated 29 of these to the nation this weekend. Each container, as I mentioned, makes 50 masks. So with 29 made, her total donation is 1,450 fabric masks. And Tammy isn't done yet. She told us that she has more to donate. And when Tammy brought these to me, I was just in tears. Her heartfelt sentiment toward doing what she can to support the nation, to help her community and to help all of our communities is truly touching. Thank you, Acheha Tammy, and to the Burbank family for your efforts.
Thank you Kim. And you know, that's just one example of the many donations that are coming into the nation that we sincerely appreciate. And we want to acknowledge and thank every donation that comes into the nation because they're just as significant as half a million dollars or a container, sterilized container of, of 50 masks. And so I know that there's a continuing mask drive. We will defer to the Command Center and to the President's Office on how to distribute these mask kits. But one of the thoughts that we had is to have folks send their messaging of social distancing, washing your hands, wearing a mask. Send those to President's Facebook page or, or to our general email address at DOJ. And we will forward those and figure out how to distribute these to, to people who are helping us spread these important messages to keep our community safe. But just from the, the Department of Justice and our capacity as, as staffing this donation branch, we really appreciate everyone's efforts. Acheha.
All right, are we back on? I think we are going to go and transition to other presenters. And then I'll come back around and do the closing remarks. I have some updates as well for the Navajo Nation employees. So stay tuned everybody, I'll announce that after the presenters and closing up on our remarks. Thank you. So our next speaker is Dr. Pearl Yellemann. She will be talking about the operations with the delegates and the local communities on these eight regions that are distribution sites. So here is our Division of Community Development Director, Dr. Pearl Yellemann.
Division of Community Development, I just want to say, hello. I want to also thank our leadership, want to thank President Nez, Vice President Elizer. Also members of the Legislative Branch, to our council delegates, chapter officials, and chapter staff. Also want to thank members from the Health Command and also members of the Judicial Branch, Chief Joanne James. I just have several items to report on today that represents the Chapter Command Branch. Collectively, there are 11 staging posts. Eight of them, eight of them are located in the Thiru area, Chinli area, the Standing Rock area, the White Cone area, Fort Defiant, Kieta, Sheep Springs, and Tubus City. We have three satellite areas that are located in the Tohajue, Reema, and Alamo area. The purpose of these, of the Chapter Branch is to coordinate food distribution and essential services. Each of these areas or staging posts are outfitted with a strike team leader, a distribution leader, an inventory leader. And they're also comprised of local THRs or PHNs. These are areas that receive and seek donations such as food, hay, water, coal, firewood, to then distribute to high-needs. Those high-needs individuals are elders. Some of our elders live in rural areas or do not have transportation. It should extend though they live way out far. Although we have families that have high symptoms and we have single parents. And the reason why I am saying single parents is because some of our foods, for the safety of our children and young children, we're asking that children be left at home or be left at a safe place if parents have to leave to get groceries. So our single parents are our high need. So our strike teams are assisting and delivering goods to those community areas. We're doing both, the Health Command Center, the Ops Operations Section and Chief, and the logistics are helping to do two things. One, the nation is seeking and advocating for resources to the Navajo Nation. At the local chapter level, chapters have taken upon themselves to look for water, food, and other resources because they know their communities. We're asking that they work with the Chapter Branch and the staging post. And it's really important why, we're asking that you continue to work with the staging post for your safety. If donations and distribution are not routed or coordinated with the Health Command Center, you could put individuals at risk or at exposure. With the staging post, we also have safety officers who are providing technical assistance and making sure that every volunteer or every individual who participates in distributing services and goods to community members are safe. So again, we're asking that donations that are brought on to the Navajo Nation or donations that are distributed through the staging post, work and coordinate with the strike team there for your safety. Again, it's also to equally distribute these items to the high need. I also want to share that we have seen successful distributions over the last several weeks. And I just want to stress from the Chapter Branch and the Health Command that these are real, these are humanitarian efforts. Please do not, please do not show that these are social events. These are not social events. When people are receiving foods or goods and services, these are humanitarian efforts and they're COVID relief efforts to assist our families. It's easy to show pictures on social media of long lines or, or individuals gathering. Again, for your safety, these are not social events. These are humanitarian COVID-19 relief. So I just want to share that. And also, in coordination with the Division of Social Services, the Division of Community Development has been working with the Health Command Center in providing protocol and guidelines for. working with the Health Command Center in providing protocol and guidelines for burial and funeral planning. Information can be found at the Health Command Center. Again, the protocol and guidelines are for grieving families of a COVID-19 related loss. We're asking that in the protocol, you will find language that assists the family in planning from home. In the protocol, you'll also find a list of the mortuary that are working with the Division of Social Services. We also have some recommendations as to the memorials being planned later as we continue to go through and get over and get past COVID-19 relief. So again, it's a sensitive time. Our heart and our understanding to all families mourning on the Navajo Nation that we're trying to support and we're in this together. And the protocol allows you to understand that you're not alone. The Health Command Center and the Navajo Nation are here to support. And if you have questions, please reach out and call us. So again, the protocol and guidelines are available. The protocols kind of wrap around the information provided by the Social Services Department. In closing, I just want to share again that the 110 chapters are closed to social gathering and events. Traditionally, chapters are known to be open to large gatherings. But again, under the Declaration of Emergency and under the Public Health Orders, the chapters are closed to social gathering and large events. The chapters are providing essential government functions. And not all chapters provide these, but some do. Some chapters provide hay distribution. They have watering points. They're providing wood and coal. Some chapters, prior to COVID and during COVID-19 relief efforts, provide propane and gas. Some chapters provide US postal mail service. So again, based on your chapter, some chapters are providing those government essential functions. And again, for clarification, please call to fully understand what chapters are providing during this time. We encourage that chapters continue to work with the Chapter Branch. And we appreciate chapter leadership. We appreciate all the support and the communication. And we ask that all goods and services be distributed very carefully, that you follow the chapter implementation plans, and that you continue to work together. We're asking everyone to continue to be safe, to remain safe, to continue to look out for each other, and to continue to communicate with one another. Here's our time to be responsible for our families, to take care of our neighbors, to take care of our communities, to take care of our children, and to take care of our elders. So in closing, I just again want to thank our leadership. Thank President Nez, Vice President Elizur, colleagues, our first responders, our Navajo Nation police officers. Thank you. Take care.
I just want to say good afternoon. This is Dr. Jill Jim with Navajo Department of Health. I'll be reporting for President Nez, I mean President, sorry, with David Nez, the Incident Commander. He's not available here right now, so I'll be reporting on some of the command activities as well. I just wanted to readdress that there'll be another curfew this coming weekend. I want to thank the Division of Public Safety, the volunteers for going out there and assisting with the curfew and enforcing the curfew. One thing that we could learn from is that you have to prepare ahead of time. Make sure that you get the things that you need. Although there are some limited services available, make sure that you're able to get the food or hay or feed that you need for your livestock and just stay home. So that's kind of the purpose of the curfew is that everyone will go into town and do their activities over the weekend. But we're trying to support the social distancing as it has proven to be effective in other cities or countries. So if you follow that, we can make a dent in the rates here of COVID-19 positive patients. So just make sure that you're well stocked and just sit still. The other public health order that was issued by the Command Center was wearing a cloth mask or some sort of facial mask that is now required. Businesses might have signs on the door. I've seen some on here in Wonder Rock where they're saying no service if you don't have a mask and/or glove. So just make sure you're aware of those changes as their way of making sure they're enforcing the Public Health Order as well. And also, other things I want to reiterate is the quarantine and isolation of individuals. If you are self-monitoring at home and you're monitoring your symptoms, make sure that you seek care when you need to, and also reach out for help and resources. So if you're positive or you need help at home, call the Command Center at 928-871-7014. And just keep trying. If you're not able to reach out and it's busy, we get a number of calls, so just keep calling and calling and calling until you get someone to answer the phone. So just make sure that you know that there'll be assistance. So just make sure you call the number, especially if you need food or things and that you don't expose yourself, especially if you're positive, that you're not in the community and if you're not taking precautions, that we can support you. Other than that, just make sure that you get the health care that you need in the emergency once you experience those problems, problems such as breathing and other issues. And try to self-monitor when you need to get the care that you need to. And so just be aware to call the health emergency line for those facilities that you live in. And so the main important message is get help. But if you're quarantining or isolating at home and you don't have a lot of help, reach out to the Command Center. Also, testing and retesting. If you've been a positive patient, I mean, you might be going to other facilities to get retested to see if you're negative. Just know that we're short on supplies across the Navajo Nation. We're not saying no, but just know that hospitals are experiencing people getting retested over and over. The other public health orders that we still want to recognize is that we're still enforcing the social distancing, limiting mass gathering. Also, we don't know how long this is going to be, so just make sure that plan for the long haul as well. And also, as Dr. Yellemann said, make sure you, if you're wanting to volunteer, people probably want to volunteer, but that's why we have staging areas. Individuals need to be properly trained and properly equipped to provide volunteerism in their communities. And then individuals coming off the reservation from external areas, we also have to be cautious of those efforts too because we don't know who's asymptomatic too. So that's why there are strict guidelines on accepting volunteer work because we have to go through our own protocols. Here at the Command Center, every day, we're all required to wear cloth masks. We're also required to get our temperature checked before we come into the building. Those are extreme precautions because you don't know who's sick when they're coming into the building. And so we're trying to be careful. And that's what we want, to have the same process for our elders as well. And then I also want to just encourage for you to be safe out there. And that means that you have to treat others like they're infected, meaning you have to clean up after yourself, make sure you have a hand sanitizer, even going to the grocery store, wiping down your food, wiping down the things that you touch when you get back into your vehicle. Before you put something in your mouth, make sure you get a hand sanitizer, especially when you're out traveling. So if you want to be safe, just stay home. I think that's the safest place you can be is at home because you know that you clean. When you go out into the community, you're increasing your exposure to COVID-19. And COVID-19 is now across the reservation. We're a complete hotspot. So don't think that there's no place. Every time you touch the gas pump to fill up your car, every time you touch the pin pad to put your pin number in there, every time you open the door to go into the grocery store, to the post office, all those are some sort of touch that you do and you will remain uncertain if someone has just recently done know they have COVID-19 that could spread through that simple. It's highly transmittable, as we mentioned before. So that would be the only precaution is just to be careful. I do have David Nez here, but I just wanted to reiterate this. And I just wanted to ensure everyone.
Gushina, this is Dave Nez from the Health Command Center. Just want to share real quickly, what is the overall operation picture across Navajo Nation from the perspective of the Command Center? So first, again, we have identified, again, from the hospitals that they have identified, and also the testing, that we do have quite a bit of positive COVID-19 patients that are being sent home or being isolated elsewhere. And that's where we're now focusing on expanding locations for these patients. We have Apache County now helping us through liaison. And we're going to be working on some motel agreements for patient quarantine. So that will be across Navajo Nation. One of the things that's very, very critical and also very important from the Command Center is that we need to ensure that the safety of our staging team and our strike teams and all our helpers that are involved in the food and the water distribution to the public, we want to ensure that we have good safety practices as well as safety protection equipment for our employees as well as the volunteers that are working at that level. So we do have firefighters that are now assigned to each one of our staging areas that do have some background and training in safety. So they are assisting the teams as we are speaking on the New Mexico side as well as Arizona. We're also working on alternative care sites again for COVID patients that are determined through testing for COVID-19. We're also looking at facilities that we can expand out as alternative care sites for our COVID patients. We do have two sites now in construction. One is in Shiprock at one of their older high schools that is being modified into a patient care facility. We also have one here in Chinli, about eighty miles from here. One of our, or the community center is being modified into a healthcare center as well. So we do have Army Corps engineer at both locations that are working 24 hours around the clock for 14 days to complete that construction so we can begin to start looking at operation with the resources that we need. And one of those resources is the medical staff. And these are the medical professionals that are going to be involved in the treatment and in the care of our COVID patients in those facilities. We also have what we call the wraparound, which is going to be the food services as well as the security, the linen cleaning, and also just the cleaning of the facilities around the clock to ensure that they are, the facilities are COVID-19 clear of any infection in facilities. So we're going to be moving in with a number of support systems, including motels or any mobile quarter facilities for all the workers that are going to be moving into these locations. One of the support that we're now working on as well is what we call the Volunteer Health Professionals. And this is through the Arizona State EOC located in the Phoenix Valley area. We do have a number of volunteers that now have been vetted through their licensures to ensure that they are meeting the requirements to practice here on Navajo Nation. So that, again, is ongoing and the numbers are building up. And within the next week, we will be staffing on how we're going to be working again throughout the 24-hour period, working two shifts or three shifts. So all that will be finalized within the next week and a half in terms of building up personnel and equipment and the resources. Resources include pharmacy and all medical supplies and equipment that is going to be needed to make it full operational. So those are just a quick look at what is going on around the Navajo Nation that we are overseeing and developing for Navajo Nation to respond to the transmission of COVID-19 on Navajo Nation. There are other national doctors as well as what we call D-MAC. These are disaster professionals that are here with us that will be assisting with the ACS, as well as we have additional that will be assisting with the ACS as well as we have additional FEMA teams here that's helping us with our operations here, meaning that we have logistics section, that we have an individual that's going to be upgrading that operation with the more complex workload that is being put on the Command Center also under operation as well. We do have a planning chief, a professional that's coming in to really help us organize a lot of our reporting system as well as our planning or any strategy sessions that we face every day to outline with a tactical writing of the actions for the day. So they are mixing with our personnel today and they're going about going through all our processes to ensure that we are meeting, you know, every section of the ICS system to ensure that we're doing this correctly as well as documentation. We also have a finance people that are now on the ground here with public health or public assistance that's going to be helping us record all our expenditures. And these again is just not in the command, but also all the outside resources that we've been using to document all their expenditures, all their support so that we can generate the reimbursement process and to ensure that we are complying with the FEMA documentation as well as the FEMA guidelines and policies to ensure that we get some of our expenses back. So with that, that's a quick overview from the Health Command Center. Thank you.
Well, thank you, David Ness, for your update at the Health Command Operations Center. Shohrin, shohrin zini gi. E ben nachje e ya, kodo e ya'te. Kodo leh do ya'te, nahado tleh jo e aja. E yese. Bakachan nahni zenle. Aro, xin sago sani ni tleni, kodo nihie ol il. Hono doha hazla dshlini. E honeshi shindlini be na ni tien. Aro, da dil tlo thwana skango, e xin sago. Nihie ol il. Be ha hazlanle. Aro, xin sago di, dy kwa. Doit i ni gi. Anall ni lini gi. E xin sago ko'e. Nab i e tienle.
Trying to juggle all these meetings.
Oko, nas go ne, nij e di, dy kwa doit i ni lini. Nachni hi gi, do ya'te hi ite. Oko, xin sago korona ta ni lini be hesani. Lohha dey de la, ashho ne, shiketo shidne'e. Bye-bye our executive orders. Aro, kodo s'zala eneni ita e di, xin sago. Elan je, nchandar nishi. Do elan je, ncha'da tani. Elan je, nchanda bahi, konta la, do tla shi. Aro, kon, denil tesa, ezee il, ene ezee ne ka. O, ochayu, e elan je, nchadey nish. E xin sago kodo beso lini gi. La ba bakha'na do, t'ala, oyu. Ik e chanda ke do yinni. Xi yin da, ke go, oko, kodo beso, la bechon na di, ni di, nini gi, e kodo. Ba alke'nsi, nde do. Ad e di, xin sago, a, yese a, denal nishdo, dy kwishi ihe' ilke'ri, epa alkitasi, nel. Oko, shiketo ne'e, no lini, xin e, nan xi e'a'a ni ko'e. Nihie ke'da lini be ke'da hasti. Akwande la, xito itado le, shiketo shidne'e. Di nachni hi do, ba eshtedani ite da. Akwande, a bel so, e iti go e ya, kodo. Nihie na'ntien lini, kodo s'landle. Oko, chale ita le e ya, bel lahtedi, chato chale ita e ya. Ben nachje, shohdani si, lini o, ochayu. My biggest, my large condolences to a lot of people that who lost loved ones. You know, shido a hatza. Akwande, bechon xi, chatzil ni do, bechon chatzil go xi, e'ada, o te'da. E nan le'da, dan, eschwido sani. Hajo' nahtehi, hajo' mhyizaba, atahliya. Hajo' shi'atahtche, yo ta'hinoh ne, nas, do, e hazenda. Jo e yee korona antine'e ite, shiketo shidne'e. Hajo' xi hutahonil nde. Osh'ohut edo leh, do, hajo' xi, nahtan lini. Aho, wado, cha'ilani, chamta' khas, etan'ta' khas, nihicodzen. Dahol lo ni do, nihie yinda, nshonoh be, na ta'hinoh tien. Jo belakana, ik echego, e you continue to create plans for your family. Continue to create goals for your family. Aro, e di ko'e, belaysi ke'do, sho, hey, di lahatza bin dahosi. An, aja eshtedadi ni, do dahani ni daholno. Oko, di ko'e ko'hot, ani gi, shideshno, e di binda, ko'e, xin sago. Ah, eslido, xin sago, ncha'ke'na, dasso. Oxi yu go be, nihich'ahatotzi, nan, nan, de shiketo shidne'e. Jo, what was happening right now is we got to embrace what is happening. And we embrace it the most positive way that we can possible by implementing new ideas, creating new systems. Jo e xin ye'elya, do, ha, she, e, kati, embracing technology that di, no, jo, ta'ni, hin. Nahinayet, ye, nahintha. Be nahinti tinta. Chale ita de do, lila di, denetan, chilninni xi o, ochayu. Oko, osh'ohot, e gi beni na. On nachj'wiil zen do le. It's time that we do a lot more online with embracing technology by implementing new ideas and new systems. A ni ite, xi xin sago. Belay di, ka, shiketo shidne'e. We'll overcome this challenge together. Aro, be nishte'ige ihe' anhidi de'sni. Aro, na'tani, no lini, s'zala, do, xiyash. Aro, shama da dan chideshne. Sh'ye, shenale, da shetse, da dan chideshne, xin sago, nihicodzen. Ye go be, nihke'nsosani, ahe'he. Aro, xin sago salado, no lini, ildo, ahe'he. Asho ne, da'chedino, sendo, yo ta'hinoh ne, shiketo shidne'e. A, kwijje be, ban dan chi ni, ka. Yo, dan chi ni, no, beni na, dan chi di, ne. Do, e xasket e ya, da. Ashho de, nihiketa honol ido, dan chi sidonof, sa. Aro, ncha'alchina, ahatza be, na danoh tien. Ha'xe' doni, nihila'adi, ni, nete'nani tleni. Amala' doni, ne'ye'la hot'a, hot'edoni. Annala' atse, amasan ne. Anle' alchini, ya, rje'ena hole, aja. Chale alchine, e, xin sago, ka, nihina'tani, danle. La do, bahanato, leh, shiketo shidne'e. Kwon, sago, e, nihich'ahana, nas, si, do le, na, ahe'he, shiketo.
Ahe'he, na, aro, shite'je. Nihich'he'yn, zi, nshonoh go, o'ta, na'ntien. Kodo, a be hazini ye, nij, koliya, do, e xin be, be nihitzil do le, shiketo no lini. Aro, a, e do, be hadaino, ne. Alla'ano, dahav alla'ano, zen go. Jo denani tleni. Aro, e, ben nachje, kon, nihie ol ildo, nihina'ntien. Nihich'eku'aliya. Aro, kodo xi do, nchalchun, nihic'oke'neli ke bech'eku'el ne, ik kon, ah'ha'and'and'ha'stka, ben nachje. So he'he, kodo, shite'je, Dr. Fowler. Nshonoh go, na, o'ta, anne'gin, nihich'eku'innla. E be, be nihitzil. Aning, shind'eku'od'na'tani. Adash'ohla'gi, ben nachje, kodo na'ntien, nihich'eku'liya, itje. Nsobansas kes, ihe'he. Jo'hot'a, na, yaho' agin. Do, e na'ntien, kwijje, koli'agi, e ben, be, da'j'tien, la, nihid'oni. Jo'hot'e, e ben, da'ni tien, itje, anil swkude. Nde'lnashigi, ts'ahahotsan de. Nishni ita, e do, nihinikina'ntien ite da. Nihie masan, nihetse, ni nalle. Ik edan, lene, o'tan, nahat'a, na'ntien, nihich'eku'da'ylaj, e ben, da'ni tien, itje. Aro, wotn'wotje. Aro, nas, kodo, ahat'a, e ya, da'ni tien, do le. Nchalchun, belpeda hazendo.
To conclude today's virtual town hall, we do have stories of recovery on our social media pages. Stories of hope. We have been getting individuals who have recovered from COVID-19 to share their stories to also give their own message to the Navajo public. We just had one recently on our social media pages to share his experience with what he went through. And that's Louis Joe from Shantil, living in Kianta right now. And if you want to share and you have recovered from COVID and want to share your story, send it to us. Find the post that has the address and send us your video so we can share it. And I know that Louis didn't really think that. He thought probably it was for the Navajo people, but it ended up all over the Southwest in a lot of news segments. So Louis, thank you for allowing that to happen for your Navajo people. I was just updated that we have received over $500,000 in donations within 24 hours since that website went live. And so we want to say on behalf of the Navajo people, you all, Navajo citizens, those that have donated, thank you so much. That's going to bring the needed personal protection equipment, the needed care packages to our citizens throughout the Navajo Nation. And so, thank you so much, organization. And even our own Navajo citizens who have donated their own dollars. I know many of you said, I got a little extra money from Uncle Sam. I would like to donate some of those dollars to the Navajo people. Shiketo shidne'a. Kade shwaltano, senegi jo, kon, bahoshne. Washington, ne, beso. Nihich'eku'da'ylagi, he'ta, e, kon, la beso eshted, eschneli. Kon, nihik'eni, Navajo, jo, ba, ech'edat, nigi, e, ba, beso, e, kodo. Nihich'eku'de'shli'tano, sin, da, dohneni gi do, dahla'gi, ba'he'henitze. Ashla, Ness, na'ti, ndamilia'je, enelt, e, kon, beso, yahanitze, ne, itje. So kodo, akai'je gi do, ka'ol, we'igi, e, kodo, nihik'eni, nihinabah, ahe'he, da di, ni do leh. Aro, kado, di, nchandar nishi gi. Jo, di, nihewashington, sa, aja. Di, nish'i nij'je, executive branch, nini aja, nchandar nishi gi. Jo, kadei, di, nihewashington, kuj'eku' executive branch, e ya, don da'nyshda. Altsa, e, tchan, demo, do leh, no, aro, tchan, na, nahadon, ni. T'has'tka, demo, isli, kon, don da'nysho, beni na, di, di, kon, dy kwasints'chagi, nachni gi. Beni na, o'ta, o'da'ilya. Jo, o'ta, e do, kon, nchandar nishi gi, dy kwasints'chagi. E ya, do, do, do kwasigi, ba'doll, ne, ta'di, no, e, ben nachje, e'ha'ah, and'and'as'ot, tchan, ta'di, no. O'ta, na, ts'os, nihich'eku'ka'ilya, kodo, shina, belp, Vice President Myron Lizer. Aro, kadee ya, jo, di, demo, gune, be, akwande, bantsedake's, do, kodo, ye'go, da'il'tcha, e gi bena'nyshida'il. Da'il, ahe'le, enegi, ncha. Kodo, chale ita, e, da'nyshni, na, na, da'nyshni, ne. Sha'eh, tchan, demo, na, do tleh, ko'e, don da'nyshda, do leh. Kon, la e'andar nishi, e, ihe'he, jo, di, kon, ye'go, e ya, nihina'nyshadar. E do, jo, kon, nihewashington, e, da'nyshka'l, nini gi, jo, la e'ya, kon, nihik'eni, nihinabah, ka'ne'itje, jo, e, kodo, e ya, kon. Ba, beke'da deh, beke'da doh, e do, ba, daholni, nini gi, jo, o'ta, e ya, a, di, nchandar nishi. E do, ahe'ets'la, dan, no lini gi do, kuj'eku' zel, ene dan, no lini gi, C X R's, dan, lini gi do. E xin do, o'ta, e ya, ahe'he, da di, ni do leh, shiketo shidne'e. So, kon ts'os, e ya, denek, ech' e ya, sa, nihich'eku'isla, do leh. Aro, hadaino, lini do, a, 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 ts'adat'ohlzen, kon, hits'ala, pan, nchandar nishi gi do, e do, pa, shiketo shidne'e. So he'he, hadaino, lini do, at'ata, ts'adat'ohlzen, ashho ne, shiketo shidne'e. So I want to end by saying too that for the Navajo Nation employees that are listening on this town hall meeting, we have issued executive orders for the past three, starting from three weeks since this pandemic came close to our nation. And we did an executive order to have our staff stay home so that the spread within the offices in Windorogon throughout the Navajo Nation. We also extended that for another three weeks. That three weeks will be ending this Sunday. And so as I discussed, this once again with our healthcare professionals and our first responders. And since we are looking at the peak in early May to mid-May, I'm hoping that we can keep that bell-shaped curve, that curve down. And I'm hoping that we can begin to lessen that peak by May, by early May, the May. And so what we're saying now is we're going to extend the executive order for the next three weeks. So three weeks would be up to May 17th, ladies and gentlemen. So we want to let everybody know that we are going to extend the closure, extend the executive orders for the next three weeks. So thank you for the staff, our first responders. And Dr. Fowler just mentioned that we are going to be doing special duty pay for those that are on the clock and helping us throughout this emergency operation. We want to continue to hold our police officers, our first responders, those that are warriors at the front line in prayer. We can, we will overcome this. We will overcome this. As I mentioned earlier, our...
As I mentioned earlier, our um, our, our, our reports do indicate. Yesterday's report does indicate by the Navajo Department of Health and their team of professionals that when I quote uh in the report that says, there does appear to be a flattening of the Navajo Nation epic curve. So those are some good news, if you want to call it that. I mean, we are at uh the flattening of the curve, but we all have to not let down, we have to uh have our Navajo people continue to do what they're doing by staying home and um taking care of yourselves out there. Let's all work together to flatten this curve and then have the curve go down. Ladies and gentlemen, we need your help. Over five hundred thousand dollars of donations have come in to the Navajo Nation. Um, and within twenty-four hours. So thank you for all the people who donated. We also um want to say thank you to our own Navajo citizens. And I said a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago that not everybody's gonna get the checks from the federal government. And some of the Navajo citizens have stepped up and said, I will help out those that are less fortunate. So these are gonna be um, more care packages will be done. Uh, more uh outreach or getting food to our most vulnerable population, those that are in need. That operation will continue. And uh as Dr. Jill Jim said, uh, HCOC is the clearinghouse uh and the vetting of all resources coming in. We need to make sure and make sure that these items that are coming into the Navajo Nation are clean. They don't have any, any, anything in there that may hurt our people or even pass the virus to our most vulnerable population. And that's why we're just saying to everyone that it's important that the HCOC be involved with a lot of the uh uh various groups out there. And during the weekend curfew, the fifty-seven hour curfew, we're, we're telling everybody here that uh they, we all need to abide by the shelter in place order, all organizations. And uh just look at what happened when the HCOC did one um exemption. And when one exemption happens, man, everybody uh has a, a, their own opinion on it. And so people are asking us to do exemptions uh for organizations to be out on the weekend. Uh, but we want to say to everybody, including the Navajo Nation Christian Response Team, the Navajo Hopi uh uh Response Team, uh the Northern Navajo Response. We need to all put our efforts together. And we also need to abide by those health orders that are given to us by professionals. And so I understand people work during the week, but the weekend is closed because we don't want the spread of the COVID-19 to go uh in various and and other areas of the, of the nation that hasn't had COVID-19 yet. So we just ask with all due respect to everybody to work through the Health Command Operations Centers for what they're doing on, on the Navajo Nation. And so what I'm gonna conclude by saying here is that we uh are extending our executive order once again for another three weeks to May seventeenth. Executive branch will be limited uh services, limited staff. Uh, and uh we'll also reevaluate that in, in a couple more weeks to see where we're at with the numbers, uh positive numbers and uh the virus here on the Navajo Nation. So shehe, xin kon da isanohts'agi do, dan nihinachigi. A do kon uh alan nihik eni hi ne'eh do, t'oh de belagana ke'da, nihik a'iche. Aro nihika'ana'cha, akhonde kujie eia Washington, nihit Washington haz'aje. E becha'tahoshne tabidi, no, hot'aa sa becha'ekunde ilni. Be ni na'gi jo di ha'ixin de'ini. La da e di kon do chi'an do, do do'ya da at'ehi da nde'ini. Oh, e do ta dolel. Aro di do, di de k'osn'ts'agi nalni gi da uh isht'cha'ha da nde'ini, ho e do ya'ashhho ne dolel, nik eno'hlini, e be ni na'ada di ne. Kujie haz'aje Health Command Operations Center haz'aje, e becha'tahoshne. Aro e do chi'an, yo'ishte de'le dolel n'cha. Klin de'yl, e dolel da di no, hot'aa e be ni na, e hot'aa l'ka'aneitje ho do ishlilde'ylne shon. Nihik eni hi ne'eh ba n'jon dolel, are da isanohts'agi. Hadaino'le, jo kodo la sa nihit n'kuda'elya. Aro la xi eia uh belagana ik etche o nihit n'hadaa'otzi. E xin do kodo uh ba'adahoshne, shik edo shid ne. Aro, aro, oh, a'yla be ni na, aro dene ik etche hadasa otzi da dene, da ne ye da ni tl, da'hal. E sa e ne'chho, shik eno'hlini. E l'ke'dan antchen e, l'ke'dan, l'ke'je nda'annishen sa'rigi da at'ah. Di ye e naso n'cha'altshin nihit so ken, hi n'alike ke don, nihetchei ni masan, hi n'al. Ba'asht, ba'asht eh, uh, uh, edait, e dolel da di, n'egi e na'ntchen, nihik nas kodo de'ildni, shik eno'hlini. Aro kodo nihit Vice President, do nihit n'hananatsito, the Vice President. Uh, I'm gonna give you some time to close uh, uh do your closing remarks. I know that we're on another call on the other side. Uh, I'm sure you can hear me now. Um, let's go ahead and uh do some closing remarks and Vice President, if you can also uh close us in prayer. So if I can get you on the screen, Vice President, that way I know that you're ready to, ready to go. And um for the Navajo people out there, we're resilient people. We've gone through some hardships in our life, in our history as Navajo people. We have some people that are still struggling out there with uh substance abuse that are in neighboring communities. We're addressing their needs. Sometimes you, you just can't tell them what to do, especially if they're under the influence of a substance. But we are working uh on having them isolated if they are uh positive uh with the coronavirus. Kon nihik eni hi ne'eh ba hajo'ba, nli belagana bik e'ah te t'chada t'kha'je, oh, koi. A, a, na, xi beso ni, nihit n'j'et, la, la e uh nihitsa da'atlal'ya. Beso e shbecha koliagwa be ni na. La ba hajo'ba, kon la nan shojdo, kin lhando, t'chot, uh, t'chada t'kha. Da'atlani gi be ni na. Nihidoo kodo e j'eh, ne'chho tabidi, no, aro, a, da, da'ahl'ya j'eh da tabidi, no, akhonde. Da'atlani gi do, zet'sana, l'ani gi xin be ni na, uh, be ne'dastel'hi gi xin hot'aa j'eh da at'ah. E be ni na, ha'iheshi, kodo nihik e da'iltcha'egi do bechbe da hazini gi e'aa l'la. N'dak ke do ikha'ana'cha, go't eshik eno'hlini. Nihidoo xin do, becha'ya da'ahl, t'che, ashhonde. A, a, ha'ana ndasa ot'cha ha'ana e sa, do a, a, e becha'eku da dohlini shik e shid ne. So shehe la, uh, di yin hil'da loh, la a nohts'kha hadaino'le di becha'eku ikha'ha. A do uh kon n'cha'altshin yin nach'eh, do a nihit, dene ni klini. Uh, be nihitzil do lel, jo di be'je ni koi go, uh, da, da'hu'il'ya n'egi ben nach'eh, l'ka'aneitje'egi ben nach'eh. So kon ts'oh xin ich'eh hasi dolel. Uh, Vice President, are you ready to go? So we uh, uh, Vice President may be on the other call here, uh, listening to uh another call. So what I'll do is um, uh, we'll have Adam Begay, who's on the phone right now, do our closing prayer. Uh, Adam, if you want to turn on your camera, we can have you uh conclude with a prayer. Or you can unmute yourself. Well, tried. So ladies and gentlemen, uh, let's pray. Shidi yin ga'lyont e di'je ko'e, ina n'cha e'ylagi, uh, ba'achehni t'zin. A do kon xin la nilke'idi ne, oh, oh, koi yu xin kon ndalts'et, do alahhot i kwimtsin xin. Uh, akhonde, ne' nas'ala, e xin i nzen n'cha kon dene ni klini do, sh'la da di n'ha'atzon. Ke'da kwit n'egi, e yin nas'ala jo alts'kon be hazen xin yil'od e. A do kon do de k'osn'ts'agi, nast e'zat da beda do'lnagi, e do ndilts'eh shidi yin ga'je, e ne' e uh uh zel en do, uh, di nts'agi, zel en uh nts'agi, e, e, n'le shidi yin ga. A do, a, alts'kho xin kon ndilts'eh, di uh de k'osn'ts'agi beda do'lnagi do, kon do. Uh, nihik eni hi ne, nitsa da'ji t'ani gi, la xi eia kon uh nihik eni hi ne ba'adabene, akhonde be'je be'da dilch'eshi yin ga. Ashhho ne, kon ba'tso dilzene, nik edan l'ani gi, uh, be ne' do be'je'da'stel'hi gi, e do ndilts'eh shidi yin ga'lyont e. Aro kon do nihit dene ni tlini gi, e a alts'kon nihit dene. Jo a xin, uh, la xin, uh, uh, la na dan zan, ha'shed a, e kon uh l'ka'adi t'ch'eshi do, kade shwaltanos zan, nihixi e do ba tsu dilzendolel. Jo edell, e do lel do, kon uh nihit Washington, jo do illndalneshdo lel. Alts'kho, an'ilts'kho, l'ka'aneitje, do ishlilde'ylne shon edaid kon. Di uh de k'osn'ts'agi nalni gi, ya kudilni l'od, do nach'eh kudilni l'od, edene mikie bu'ka'ha. So e kodo eia n'je hasi do le shidi yin ga'lyont e, ashhho ne. Kodo da tsu dilzene gi do, n'chandu dil'el do, n'cha kodo n'ense kes, gi no'ha'asht'ane dil'ishni do. So de e n'je, ben nach'eh, ni, ni, ni je, be'je ben nach'eh, Jesus Christ, ada di ni dolel. Kon ts'oh, amen. Shehe la, a nohts'kho. Ada, ada, ya do l'ka'ana'cha, kon ts'oh xin nihit n'hadasi t'zi dolel. Thursday go eia di zat da, uh, di jinda n'ashon e, akhona, akhona xi uh nihit uh, ana hanne, nihit n'akona de'ltle dolel, uh, nezna ol kil'opino. E a xi eia uh radio, xi hot'aa bana hanne dolel, so e do hastkha ol kil'oshin be'da hazendolel. Shehe la.